We're going to have debate between the six candidates running for the three seats of the city council. Brian Bain, Cheryl Hens, Joey Youngworth, Shirley Maddox, Brian Peschal, Meredith Shimer. The way this is going to work is that each candidate will, in order, get an opening statement. And at the end, they will each get a closing statement. In the middle, debate, Tim Ernst, the Vice President of the Political Science Student Association, that is sponsoring this event along with my department, Political Science, and the university, will be asking the candidates respectively a question, which they will get two minutes to respond. And then each of the other candidates will get one minute.
Dr. Simmons mentioned I'm Tim Ernst, the Political Science major here at UWO, Vice President of the Political Science Students Association, Captain of the UWO Debate Team. And I'd like to thank you again for coming out for this event. We're going to have openings, we're going to start with opening statements. We'll start at this end with Brian Bain.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Jim, and all of the student organizers here this evening. My name is Brian Bain and I am running for your Oshkosh Common Council. I was raised in a working middle-class family. And I was the first to go to college. And I have the student laws to prove it. My experience here in the city of Oshkosh is the Plan Commission, the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee. I'm an ad hoc member of the Oshkosh Area Humane Society. I'm currently in Leadership Oshkosh, a graduate of the Oshkosh Police Citizens Academy. And I've been involved in various organizations and groups through my work here at UW-Oshkosh. I'm running for the Oshkosh Common Council because I believe this election is one of the most important in recent history. Continued success depends on a council that can react to the present, plan for the future, while respecting the past. I believe that we need to elect officials who will act responsibly, ask tough questions, research the issues, actively listen and involve the public. I also believe that we need leaders who will promote new ideas and not just criticisms. Leaders who are not just for or against something. That's why I'm running and that's why I'm asking for your vote. I have followed the city issues very closely over the past two years. I have a personal vested interest in this community. And it would be an honor for me to serve on your Oshkosh Common Council. I ask for your vote. Please vote for Bain for Council on April 5th. And I do have a website, B-R-Y-A-N-B-A-I-N dot com. And I ask that you log on to that for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Cheryl Hens. And I'd like to start by thanking Professor Simmons, Campus Greens, and all of the rest of the UW-Oshkosh sponsors and organizers for putting together this event this evening. I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates for participating and for your folks from down here. My name is Cheryl Hens. As I said, there is a number of reasons why I'm seeking a position on the Oshkosh Common Council. Mostly though, I think we need to start helping the citizens feel more like this truly is their government. We need to stop what I believe has been some irresponsible spending and some pretty poor decision-making. I'm a native of this community and I do care about this future like all the candidates. While there are a lot of things that are right about this community and the way it's being run, there are a lot of things where we can improve. And I want to be a part of that improvement process. I've served in appointed public office in this city for 12 years on a variety of commissions and boards, including the Board of Appeals on which I am currently the Chair. And I've served on that board for the last five years. In those positions, I've always exercised sound judgment, thoughtful deliberation, and due diligence in all matters that came before us. Moreover, in my professional work as a journalist, I've had the opportunity to talk to elected officials in many different communities throughout this area. And in doing so, I see a lot of what they're doing that's right. And I think that we could learn from those communities. And that would include things like economic development and getting public buy-in before we start spending millions of dollars. I have the ability to and the reputation for researching issues thoroughly. I have courage to ask tough questions, even if they make many others uncomfortable. And I've been asking a lot of questions for a very long time. Not just since I've decided to enter this race. I think that these things make me uniquely qualified to serve the people of this community. I'm honored that so many people have asked me to run and represent their interests. I ask for your vote on Tuesday, April 5th.
Hello, everyone. I too want to thank everyone that was involved in putting this forum together. My name is Joey Youngworth. I am running for the Oshkosh Common Council because I do believe that I can make a difference for the people of this city. I have been married to my wife Wendy for nine years. And we have three children, Austin, Kaylee, and Jacob. Austin and Kaylee are both enrolled in the Oshkosh Area School District. And Jacob will be starting kindergarten here in August. Now, we are all lifelong residents of the city of Oshkosh. I am a two-time candidate for council after being defeated last year by a mere 28 votes. I decided to run again because I believe that there are a lot of important things happening in Oshkosh. The redevelopment of downtown, the street repairs, budget. And I want to be a part of those important decisions. I can promise you that I will listen closely to your questions and concerns and get answers to those in a timely fashion. I do want to encourage everyone to go out and vote on April 5th. This is a historic election, I believe. There are a lot of things that are coming up in the city here in the next two years and beyond. And this is one way for everyone to voice their opinion on how they feel the city is progressing. I would appreciate your votes on April 5th for Joey Youngworth. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Shirley Proctor-Mannox. And I'm running for my third term on the council. I moved to Oshkosh in 1967. And I've been, I've taught for 35 years. When I retired, I wasn't finished living. And there was a student at the university named Manuel Malek who had been on the council, I helped get him elected. And he was going to go to medicine to further his studies in political science. And he said, "Would you please run?" So I did. And at first you wonder, "Do you have a voice that will be heard?" But I think anyone that cares about people, about the city, and about making things better can relate to most anybody. As a teacher, you have to be positive. Because you must believe that better things will happen. And so I've tried, in my four years on the council, to be a positive voice that says, "There has to be a way that we can continue to make Oshkosh a better place to live." Several times I've been on campus when you've had your safety walks at night. And it's exciting to see that, yes, this can be changed. We can put a light here, we can put a telephone there to make something better. And I think that's probably one of the prime jobs of a counselor. You have to be educated. And because, as a teacher, you're usually curious, I enjoy researching topics. And sometimes these topics can take you to other cities, talking to officials in other cities who are most eager to share with you. And then you can bring back what you've learned and hopefully make some application here. I hope that I have been accessible. I have my own email that I use and the city's email. My telephone number is listed. And over the years, I've had people call me about fire hydrants, about dogs, about street hols, about neighborhood problems. And I've tried to do my best. So if you're so inclined, after hearing, after hearing all the reports and reading all the websites that are out there, I would appreciate it if you would consider voting for Shirley Proctor-Mannox.
Good evening. My name is Brian Peschal. I am the first, not my second year, my first term on the council. As I stated two years ago when I ran for this office, back in my younger days, I didn't care a whole lot about government issues. And I said that two years ago. And I was happy to get elected two years ago to learn all the different types of government issues that go on. The funding and the budgets and your city taxes and streets and all the public services that are meant as the core of your city of Oshkosh. Also, want to thank the people that are here tonight. So let you know that some people say you're just UWO residents for nine months. You're not, you're citizens of Oshkosh, we're happy to have you. And I'm glad to be here for the first time at the university to speak to the people that are here. I've been on the council, as I say, for two years. I've been a member of the Oshkosh Parks Board and the Oshkosh Transit Division to help students get around town with the latest deal we worked out, where again, students with their ID get free bus rides when they show their ID. I'm glad we can make things work like that through the state and also for the university students here. I've chosen to get to run because I've learned a lot of things in the past two years. I want to put them to use again for all the citizens in the city of Oshkosh. And I am accessible. I'm always able to call, you can call me anytime. Do any, as far as contact me. I'll always try to get you answers. I know they may not be the ones you or I like to hear. But I'll do the best as I've always tried to protect each citizen's tax dollar in the city. Have progress go on and make our city be the best city to live in in Oshkosh. But hopefully keep the dollar to a minimum. Because you have some funds in your wallet to spend on whatever progress is made compared to when it's done, but you can't afford to go there. So if you do like some of those things that are going on in Oshkosh that I've been a part of in the last two years, and hopefully continue on that way, I would certainly appreciate your vote on April 5th. And for any of us up here also, I just ask you, and anyone else that you know that's not here tonight, get them up to vote on April 5th. It is a big election. And just tell everyone to get out and vote. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Meredith Shinerman. And I too am asking for your vote on Tuesday, April 5th. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank the Political Science Department, the Political Science Student Association, the Greens, and all of you for taking time out to come tonight. 2005 will bring us great challenges as we continue to move forward and invest in our city. This investment includes new amenities. But it also includes the basic repairing of streets, the redoing of sewers, and sustaining the arts and culture which help make Oshkosh what a great city it is. Doing this, however, is no easy task. It takes dedicated council members. Specifically, we need to open the lines of communication. And we must ask really tough questions many times in the face of adversity. I believe we also should have experience and the capacity to understand a $58 million budget. Because that's what we do. I can and will do these things. Born in Oshkosh, I graduated from UWO. And I also went through the Leadership Oshkosh Program. I have a speech communication and Spanish degree. And I'm the manager of the US Bank in Downtown Oshkosh. I'm involved in seven boards and committees and commissions in the city, including Propel, Friends of Ocat, and Board of Zoning Appeals with Cheryl Hens as well. I'm very proud of the contributions that I've given to this city in the last two years. And I look very forward to continuing that. The following reasons are just a couple of things I'd like to highlight for you this evening. First of all, I'm a serious candidate, one who will serve you each day with social and fiscal responsibility. Second of all, I'm not a single-issue candidate, but someone who will tackle a wide variety of issues and research them until we come to a conclusion. And finally, maybe most importantly, I won't make promises I cannot keep. I've spoken from the heart. I will continue to promise to do what it takes to make smart, educated decisions. And like everyone else up here, we all ask for your vote on Tuesday, April 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Now it's time for the debate proper. Each candidate will have one question directed to them. And the candidate to whom that question is directed will have two minutes to make their answer. At the end of the candidate's answering time, each other candidate will have one minute rebuttal. And when your time is going, when you run out of time, I'll just say time. You have to stop. Sorry. So the first question is for Brian Bain. "The city has many public wants and capital needs. For example, street repairs, public services, and recreation. What are your top priorities for the city? And how can they be accomplished without service reductions and fewer city employees, or a substantial increase in taxes and fees, additional state aid, or more debt?"
Could you repeat the question, please?
"What are your top priorities for the city? And how can they be accomplished without service reductions and fewer city employees, or a substantial increase in taxes and fees, additional state aid, or more debt?"
Okay, thank you. There are a lot of needs here in the city. And there are wants that we have as well. And oftentimes, those are debated in these types of arenas. And that's proper, that's acceptable. Some of the top priorities that I would work for here in the city of Oshkosh is to create a more accessible and accountable transparent city government. It costs us zero dollars to do that. Zero. We can hold, for example, Tuesday forums. We can hold neighborhood council listening sessions. We can have a website that is detailed and accessible and provides opportunities for citizens to gain access to information and provide feedback. We can have comment cards, not only at the exit in City Hall, but also in every department, so that you can directly comment to some of the issues that are going on. In addition to that, I would also work for planned growth and development. I think it's critical that we start to enter conversations with the surrounding towns around the city of Oshkosh as we grow and as they grow to start to look at smart growth techniques and better utilization and planning of our growth. Oshkosh can only grow west, north, and south. We have a big body of water to our east that prohibits that. And we have towns that surround us. And we need to enter into some conversations with them now, proactively, so that we're not butting heads. Specifically dealing with the tax issue, we have three options. We can either raise taxes on the current base. We could, like was said, slash city services, those core essential services. Or we can make smart, responsible investments in the future of the city of Oshkosh to make Oshkosh a more quality business and family-friendly environment. And that's what I would work towards. I would venture out with the College of Business to work with them on what can we do to become more entrepreneurial and collaborative with CHAMCO, the industrial arm of the city, the Oshkosh Commercial Development Corporation, the commercial development area in our city. What can we do to work with them together to bring more business and more activity, if you will, into the city of Oshkosh? Thank you.
That's your time. Cheryl Hens, you have one minute rebuttal, if you'd like.
I don't necessarily need to rebut anything that Brian said. I think overall, he's got some very good ideas. You know, I don't know that you can do those things without some type of, you know, possibly a service reduction, or cut in city staff, or looking at state aids, or increased taxes. You may have to do one or a combination of those things. We'd all like to avoid that if we possibly can. But I don't know how we can maintain what we're trying to do without some give and take somewhere. But I do think, as Brian said, accountable government is very, very important. We also need to look at smart growth. And I don't mean just in the way we plan communities and so forth. I mean making smart business decisions in how we have our economic development going forward. That includes taking a look at the TIF districts and being more accountable there. Looking at project viability before we start a TIF district. I know that some people don't think that that's the city council's job. But indeed it is, I believe. If you're going to be having public money paid, put into something, and you're going to have a public vested interest in something, then you better be sure that there is some viability for that project. Other communities do it. There's no reason Oshkosh can't. Thank you.
Well, that's an interesting question. I don't think you can just have your cake and eat it too. You have to do some things. If you want development in the city, if we want to grow our tax base in the city, there are things that we are going to have to do. We're going to have to go and get some funding. We may have to raise taxes. I mean, we can't just magically redo our city streets and not have anyone pay for it. I think that we have to, as a community, as a city, we need those things. And we've got to pay for those things. What we have to do, what I'd like to see Oshkosh do, is build its tax base. That's important, and that comes through development. Going out and venturing out in different communities and in other areas around us and utilizing our waterfront. We need to do those things to bring up our tax base, to bring people to Oshkosh to not only live, but visit, spend some money in our restaurants and at our convenience stores, gas, whatever. We need to do that. But I don't think we can just do that by waving a magic wand and saying, "Well, we can't raise your taxes. We're not going to go get money from the federal government or other areas."
That's your time.
We need all that. Thank you.
I agree with what Brian said. He talked about fostering smart growth to the north, the south, and the west. On the Plan Commission, Brian and I are serving together. And we just finished a two-and-a-half-year study building a comprehensive plan, which was approved last night at the council. But smart growth is really smart when you don't have to keep expanding, buying another 80-acre farm. But instead, you look within the city, what we have right now. And we say, "We've got a brownfield here. We have a shopping center there that's almost empty. What can we do here to redevelop?" And I think, yes, that's the smartest growth that we can do. Also, in order to grow that tax base, we have, we must, it's imperative that we have economic development to foster more jobs and to build a tax base. And in order to do that, we must be favorable for industry. There was a study a couple of weeks ago, the top 17 industrial parks in the state. Three of them are in Oshkosh. And we are considered to have the top program in the state. It's because our prices online is competitive.
I also, I believe in what Brian says as far as about growth within our city of Oshkosh. Although, I don't believe it has to be done with raising taxes. I also believe streets can get taken care of. There are processes that we have on the ordinances right now within the city of Oshkosh. You look around Oshkosh, as Shirley just mentioned, there's a lot of empty buildings around, different businesses being built. There's different areas that, as far as we put our development group to work, and CHAMCO, and as far as the other development groups we have within City Hall, I think we can bring businesses into Oshkosh with some of the empty buildings that are out there. And along with that, as far as beautify our gateways to the city. And by that I mean as far as that, when you come into Oshkosh from the north, 76, 45, to the middle of 21, 9th Street, to the south of 44, 26, then when you turn into Oshkosh, it's, wow, look at this city. I want to be part of it. And whatever I could say, I went to another city two weeks ago. The last time I was there was five years ago, I was skiing one time.
That's your time.
And it's beautifully developed for five years.
One of the downsides of being the asset intended to debate, it always happens to me, that I have to come up with something a little bit different than the five people before me. But you'll find a lot of common similarities between us. But when the question first came out of what are the top priorities, I wrote three down. I wrote in this order. Protecting core services, economic development, and accessible and accountable government. So those would be three core, or three top priorities that I see in the next couple of years, probably beyond. The way we do that is to increase our tax base. Again, you have three choices, cutting services and jobs, raising taxes, or increasing the tax base from day one, then my platform, increasing the tax base. We do that by a couple of ways. First and foremost, which costs us nothing, about being vocal, positive, and progressive in our thinking. We need to ensure that we are business and consumer-friendly, which starts at every employee in City Hall, every council member, and actually every citizen in the city of Oshkosh. And finally, ensuring we have strong public and private partnerships. That will also help us ensure that we increase our tax base.
Okay. For the questions from now on, I'll give each speaking candidate a 10-second warning. Now when your time is up, I'll remind you again that your time is up, just for a frame of reference. All right. Our next question is for Cheryl Hens. "Discuss what you think about interest group facilitation. Should local candidates accept endorsements and take Political Action Committee money from special interest groups?" You have two minutes.
Can you just repeat the first part of that?
Sure. Discuss what you think about interest group facilitation.
I don't necessarily think that it's a good idea to be taking Political Action Committee money. However, there is a Political Action Committee that did pay for an insert in the newspaper. I'm part of that Political Action Committee. And that particular Political Action Committee has no ties to any special group or any special interest. The only interest that citizens for responsible government has is, we want responsible government. We're not tied to any lobbying group. We don't lobby anyone, anywhere. We just want smart business decisions being made and responsible government. So in a case like that, I had no problem allowing them to put that insert in. I did not take any money from them, however. I think that when you do take PAC money, Political Action Committee money, I do think that oftentimes, those groups feel that you are beholden to them. And the candidates themselves perhaps feel that they might be beholden to them in some respects. So I think if you're a slipper slope, you do start getting into taking Political Action Committee. Thank you.
Well, I have to agree with Cheryl, myself included. Citizens for Responsible Government did send out a flyer with my name on it. I am not embarrassed about that whatsoever. I think that it's a, you know, it's Citizens for Responsible Government. That's what we're hoping for, that's what we're looking for, that's what we want. As Cheryl said, there is no lobbying group. We're not affiliated with any special interest group. And I do have a problem with some people taking money from PAC groups. And like Cheryl said, you don't almost feel like they're in your back pocket. I don't want anyone to think that I'm in their back pocket. I will make my decisions based on my findings on the issues and what's good for the city of Oshkosh and for its people. Thank you.
When I ran the first time, I couldn't ask for money, but people gave me money. And I think it showed that they supported what they thought I would do on the council, which would be be a positive voice and listen. However, six years ago, there was a group that we, a group of us started. It was called NICE, Neighbors Involved in Community Environment. And we wanted to create an awareness of the importance of neighborhoods. And so we collected lots of money. We had beautiful yard signs made. We sent out questionnaires. We published 10,000 brochures, went door-to-door. And we endorsed four candidates. We didn't give them money, but I think we gave them support. And in some way, support, if it's money or if it's in kind, shows that there are people that believe in you and what you're trying to do. Last, two years ago, I ran on zero. This time, we have this huge influx of interest. And so it's a little bit harder for a first-time candidate.
As far as with, as Cheryl Hens said, I too was listed on brochure from Citizens for Responsible Government. I helped with that group as far as back in the summer when the group started doing petitions for the neurodrive. And we ended up stopping that petition organization. I myself, as far as have been endorsed by a couple of local groups. I accept their endorsements, as I told them to begin with, that it's very nice to be thought of by their groups. Let them spend their money whatever they've done. But as far as I myself, and as far as I am a two-year, or first time, second time running for the city council here, that I go on what I do. Being a common person in the city of Oshkosh, hopefully what I've done on the city council has represented every citizen in the city. I haven't spent a penny. And I haven't taken a penny. So that's, I don't accept any of the funds at all. Thank you.
The dynamics of this race this year are very different than any other year in the past. 14 candidates signed up for this, and we're down to six. I am the, I am very proud to admit that I have several endorsements in this community. And I have a lot of support in this community. And absolutely, I have accepted financial contributions as well. But I will be very quick to point out the fact that, besides the point of being very proud of the support I've received, I clearly have the ability to differentiate being in somebody's back pocket. The contributions that I've received from several groups in this community are not all financial. And yet, there have been some impressive ones as well. But I can tell you, and I can look all of you in the eye and be But I can tell you, and I can look all of you in the eye and be on camera and be on record and tell you that there is no, will be no improprieties from anyone who comes before the council should I get elected. Business is business. Thank you.
I too have also received political action committee either endorsement or funds. But I have said from the get-go that I would respond to and talk with any group, whether it's right here in Oshkosh, a couple of people in a neighborhood, or an organization, and answer their questions. And if they felt like that I represented some views that they could support, I welcome their support. If you look at the people who are supporting me, if you look at a group like Forward Oshkosh, and then a group like Progressive Majority, oppositions typically of the political spectrums, conservative versus liberal, shows broad-based support. And that's what I've done. I have earned this support because of the vision and the ideas that I put forth. Thank you.
Our next question is for Joe Youngworth. Years of heavy losses, or, excuse me, years of losses of heavy industry have left Oshkosh's riverfront blighted. Explain what projects you think should be developed along the river and what role city government should play in subsidizing these developments.
Well, I think as in city government, we've got to keep an open mind on development for our waterfront. As many of you may know, we have, there's been mumblings about a Five Rivers Resort coming to Oshkosh or wanting to come to Oshkosh. The paper has put the number into $62, $63 million water park condos and things along that line. That's very good for Oshkosh. I'm proud to say that, I'm proud to hear that there's a company that wants to come and help us utilize our riverfront, which I don't think we have been doing. Now, we've got the ban shell that's in, going to be starting its second phase. That's a step in the right direction. I'm not sure that, or I can tell you now, I would not have voted for that at this time for taxpayers' money to be spent on that. That ban shell was a donation, a wonderful donation from the Leach Foundation, and we could have used it as that. But I think we need to keep an open mind of what we want to do and what we plan on doing. And as citizens out there, if you feel that there's something we should be doing, call your city council members. Call Jackson Canyon. Call Mr. Walling. They'd be more than happy to hear from you. Public input is very, very vital to anything that we plan on spending a large sum of money on. Maybe this Five Rivers Resorts complex is something that could, it could be an option to put it up to referendum and let the people in the city of Oshkosh, or let the council members know how the people in the city feel about spending that kind of money. Thank you.
The water is our gem. We have 22 miles of waterfront in Oshkosh. I can't think of too many cities that have that claim. The riverfront, where the industries are pretty much empty shells or they've been removed, leave a potential for marvelous redevelopment. The very highly contaminated Wisconsin Public Service Site has been turned into a public park area with the amphitheater. I liked the chancellor's idea of UWO and Mercury Marine and Fox Valley Tech forming some part of a program and having some area on the waterfront, a presence there. It's imperative, though, so that's, it's imperative that we have a mile and a half, 30 feet wide, that's given to the public realm. It will not be given to private enterprises. And that, I think, is very important. I'll say more later.
With the question as far as for our waterfront, I believe it is a great item that is there for a lot of uses. Would like to see industry developed there, which would get many more jobs in the city of Oshkosh, jobs that people here could look forward to as they graduate from university, state citizens, Oshkosh residents, where they're from. As was reported with the development of the condo and water park resort, we'll wait to see what comes more of that in the future. If something that doesn't happen, I look to the possibility of, as far as been brought up before, that it could possibly be something built on the riverfront that could be comparable to a Bay Beach amusement park in Green Bay. It costs Green Bay about $500,000 to $600,000 for that park, and you make over $1 million each year on it. If we had something in Oshkosh that made $1 million for the tax base in the city each year, then it'd be awesome to replace the $1 million estate it's taken back. Thank you.
Clearly, the waterfront is our, one of our greatest assets in the city of Oshkosh. I believe the question was two parts to it. It talked about projects along the river that I'd be in support of, and first and foremost, it would be the amphitheater project. Started out in the Conference of Plan years ago, again, adopted in 2000, the Downtown Action Plan, something that has been on the books for a long time for the city of Oshkosh. This year, we saw a $1 million donation for the ban shell. We then, in a very short time, saw another $1 million anonymous donation that came forth. We now have, I believe it's $300,000 from private citizens, going to support the first couple of shows to make sure that the prices stay down low, and it becomes a community venue for the city of Oshkosh. Folks, this has momentum right now, and while I'm very proud of the fact that I believe we should continue the momentum. Let me ask you, my final point is, if the city of Oshkosh isn't willing to invest some dollars, why should developers come and invest their dollars here as well? Thank you.
I think, as Shirley mentioned, this is an awesome opportunity for us to take what was once the industrial arm of our community and turn it into something that's so wonderful. We are the envy of a lot of communities. We have so much waterway. And I think it needs to be accessible to the public, and we need to use smart, use blighted areas. This is an excellent way for us to take care of our environment, to go and remediate and work with the public and private ventures to revitalize and redevelop this area so that it can be something that we're all very proud of. What's the role of the city? To partner with the public and private ventures, to work with UWO, and I believe Evergreen and looking at the Living Learning Service community, to promote what we have to offer. We need to go out and sell what we have here in the city of Oshkosh. We're proud of it. Let's go out and promote it. Work on the Plank Commission on zoning ordinances to make sure that the process works effectively for people coming forward. But most importantly, we must involve the citizens, involve you in this process to help us make those decisions.
I would certainly be in favor of looking seriously at any kind of project along the river that some developer wanted to bring in and that can add to our tax base and our economic development. But I think as far as what role the government plays in that development, if we are going to, you know, we invest in public money in it, your money and my money, then we need to take an even closer look at it. We need to make sure that there is, as I mentioned earlier, some viability to the project. We certainly don't want to be investing public money and then have projects that fail, as they have in other communities. So we want to make sure that if public money is being entrusted into these projects, that we have some kind of assurity that those projects will hopefully be successful. Thank you.
Our next question is for Shirley Maddox, and this is a two-part question. Have recent developments on the Main Street made you more optimistic or pessimistic about the future of Oshkosh over the next 20 years, and why? And then, what is your vision for the city's downtown, and how can the city partner with commercial interests to produce this gold?
Oh, great. Four years ago, I ran on downtown and downtown neighborhoods, revitalizing them, and in four years, it's phenomenal what's happened. We have what I call the magic corner, where we have the old Wagner Opera House, where Terry Lane came and restored it. I mean, people used to talk about tearing it down so they could straighten out the street. Now we've got this magnificent building where we have art gallery walks visiting on the first Saturday. Across the street, we have the Bent Block, which used to be the old Oshkosh Business College. Now there are 12 apartments upstairs, and there are going to be some businesses moving in downstairs. Across the street was that magnificent triangular Webster Block, which was, pieces were falling off. It was a derelict building with a derelict landlord, and it was retrieved by a man who had lots of money that loved old buildings, from Stevens Point. And he came, and we have another place where there are 12 beautiful buildings, a business downstairs, a hair salon. It's done so well. In the first year, they hired seven more employees. Go up and down the street, we have young people. Megan and Eric Koopman bought three buildings. These are all students of mine, that they're restoring, and they're going to have six apartments upstairs. If you go down Main Street right now, they've got it all cordoned off. There's Marcia. She was a day school kindergarten teacher. She retired. She came to town, and she's got Little Marcia's Cafe, which is a wonderful meeting place. Jay and Julie Connor brought their business, which was on Appleton, Architectural Artifacts, and they now have Crescent Moon Antiques. Mike Russell came to town, and he had the greatest states. He's doing so well. He had to buy a bigger building. He paid a half million dollars for the old Johnson Hills. I'm going to finish this one up. And just had an open house. People come from all over to come to some of these specialty places. And it's not at a standstill. It's moving, and it's magic.
As far as for downtown Oshkosh and what's happened in the past years, as you mentioned, first of all, I think it's growing. A lot of people may think differently. I look at a lot of businesses down there. It's too bad that this time we don't have one or two main cornerstone businesses that bring people downtown to get with. But a lot of little ones make big ones, and we've seen that happen recently. I believe one of the other things is, to keep downtown growing, we do need to keep going on the street projects to make sure our streets stay well, that people can enjoy driving downtown to go to these places. As far as going for the next 20 years, thank you for your second part of the question. I hope to see business continue to boom downtown. I'm a firm believer that there will be business back downtown compared to what's on the highways, magic, as they call it. But we continue to write process, I believe downtown, and once again, be like it was a long time ago.
Another fun question. Absolutely, I'm very optimistic about what has happened in the downtown as of recently. Last year, $10 million in assessed value happened downtown Oshkosh. 20 new businesses came into town. Entrepreneurs, young people, every day. I think there's been, I know of seven young people under the age of 30 who have bought buildings downtown there. I mean, how exciting. When they buy those buildings, they're redeveloping them. They're helping our low-income, low-moderate-income housing problem that we have in this city by redoing some of the buildings and allowing that in the upper floors. So absolutely, I'm excited about that. The vision that I have would be continuing this momentum. I think it's important that we continue to have a safe downtown. I think it's important that we have a pedestrian and bike-friendly downtown, that we continue with landscaping and green space where we can downtown. And finally, we need to continue to make sure that we have reasons to stop each shop downtown. Thank you.
I am extremely optimistic about the progress that's being made in downtown Oshkosh. Contrary to what some will say, businesses are not leaving in droves. We have a vibrant, progressive downtown community, central city community, not just Main Street, Oregon Street as well, and I think we need to look at both of that. What kind of vision would I have? Continued public-private partnerships, looking at accessible, affordable housing, something that's family-friendly and has a good business culture. I think downtown, central city area, needs a grocery store, and I like the idea of a co-op grocery store that would enhance and bring an opportunity for people who live in that area to shop in that area, because they're a part of that community. It, I guess, strengthens the ties to that area.
10 seconds.
And I think we also need to look at the downtown action plan. It's been five years. Let's bring it out. Let's open it up. Let's look at what we've accomplished, what we haven't, and re-involve the public as we move forward in the future. Thanks.
Well, contrary to Brian, businesses have left downtown. There may be a number of them down there right now, but nonetheless, businesses have left. Nobody's asking questions as to why they've left. That's part of what we have OCDC for. They apparently have not done their job, as far as I can see. Nonetheless, I am optimistic about what I do see going on downtown. There have been some nice things that have happened in the last couple of years, and I would like to see that continue. I think the city needs to take a look at perhaps putting together its own Economic Development Department or a House of Economic Development to try to encourage businesses not only to go into downtown, but to stay there once they're there. We also, I believe, need to promote community activities. We've had some in the past year or so downtown. We need to do more of that. And like Brian said, we need a grocery store. We lost Walgreens, and that was a shame.
Well, downtown, I think, will definitely be an issue that will be at every candidate's forum for the next 20 years in the city of Oshkosh. I'd like to first off thank the lot of the business that have been down there for umpteen years, the Kids &amp; Files, the Old Leos, and there are several others. Downtown will fall or rise on its own merits. People are going to see what's going on going on downtown. We have the ban shell. That is right down there. Riverfest is a great thing on Thursday nights, and I think you see some of the business flourish because of that. We need to bring more things downtown that are family-friendly. But I'd also like to see monies go into other areas down on Oregon, down on Oregon Street. I don't think we should just have to focus all our attention on Main Street and not in other parts of the city.
Our next question is for Brian Henshaw. Explain your views on the appropriate relationship between the city and other local governments in Winnebago County. Are there opportunities for coordination, cooperation, or consolidation with the county's schools and town boards over issues such as economic development, urban sprawl, and shared services?
Thank you. As far as for the Oshkosh government collaborating with other towns around us, I don't see us joining forces in each type of department as far as the, as far as saying, "Oshkosh police" and say, "Dina police" or something, but as far as, I do see some of the things we've done correctly, where in the past year, the fire department did go in with six other fire departments, and all of them ordered all their supplies together to make it be a low-cost item for all the cities included, compared to each city and town buying their own supplies, and made the cost be a lot lower that way. That, I believe, was a good deal. But as far as joining forces together, I still believe each city and town has their own specialties, and that's what they've always been good at as far as that goes. Economic development, as far as, I give great consideration there as far as for that type of development going on in Oshkosh. I believe that it could even be more if we go out and let a lot of other developers that want to get into the city of Oshkosh, let them place bids on items and also become part of the city, not just your major, few developers in the city getting all the contracts to build everything. Urban sprawl, Oshkosh has done pretty well on that, as far as we've expanded many different ways. We're seeing different areas where, as far as, for business-wise, we spread out to the west to different areas. I believe the next place to grow will be out, the New Highway 45 area, the other side of 41, between 45 and 76, which is the old Jackson Drive 45. And as far as for shared services, I mentioned earlier, where we do share the services with the fire department and going to other areas, I hope we can expand a bit more to help Oshkosh become bigger. Thank you.
With the shared tax revenue going down, health care costs rising, construction costs, utility costs increasing, we have to look at everything. I have been in support of and been very vocal about I have been in support of and been very vocal about partnerships with other townships and with Winnebago County. I have been vocal about having a collaboration with the police department and the sheriff's department. I understand they're interested in talking about it. I certainly think that we should as well. I question the county health department and the city health department, why we have two health departments? I'm sure there's some very good reasons, but I'm wondering if there could be some shared services there as well. I think everything should be on the table, or we'll see increases in taxes that we don't want to accept. In the comprehensive plan that was adopted last night, there were three points that actually addressed this very issue. Number three, number eleven, and number twelve, and it talks about partnering with neighboring communities. So clearly, the city has already addressed that. Thank you.
I too am in support of always looking at any option bringing to the table. I think with declining shared revenue and increased costs of healthcare utilities and whatnot, we need to look at all the opportunities. Some areas that I would like to look at, purchasing power, everything from heavy equipment to paper towels and toilet paper. Let's work together, buy in bulk, and we can, and provide some opportunities to save some money. Intergovernmental cooperation was something that we have in, in the comprehensive plan that was just passed, and I think that's an opportunity for us to take a look at how we could work with, and again, I'll bring up the issue of boundary agreements with our surrounding towns. What can we do to work together to be more effective with our tax dollars? I think we can look into the possibility of a county-wide police department. I'm not sure how, how that'll work. We need to bring the sheriff and the police department, or police chief together so we can look into that. One new idea that I had brought forward is a grant writer. I think a grant writer, a county-wide grant writer, we can work with Winnebago County, the city of Oshkosh, and the Oshkosh Area School District. That person's position can be worked their way to gold. We need to tap into other resources together.
I agree with what one of the candidates have said already on this issue. I think that we have consolidated in many areas wherever we can. I would like to see more of that. As far as mutual aid agreements, boundary agreements, annexation issues, we do work fairly well with our surrounding communities in these areas. That, of course, needs to continue, and I don't see any reason why it won't. As far as urban sprawl, again, we do work closely with our neighbors. I know we've had some problems with the town of Elgoma in the past, but thankfully, that can be resolved in the future as well, so that we don't run into those snags. Buying in bulk with other communities. I know we've done that, and I'd like to see us look at insurance, purchasing insurance with other communities. That is such a tremendous cost. That's something that we really need to take a real close look at. Thank you.
Well, I think it's very important to keep our options open. I mean, I, I would like to think that any one of us up here would, would be willing to listen to anyone when, when it comes to saving some money. And that's how we evolve, you know, buying in bulk and, and things along that line. I think it's very important to keep a very close relationship with all our surrounding communities, our townships and our villages. And the, the big thing that I'd like to look into is the healthcare. Between our budget, healthcare and, and salaries are, are a very good portion of what we spend our tax dollars on. And if, and if we can, can save some money in that, on that end, and I, I'm, I'm not so sure I'm a big fan of bringing in the sheriff's department and police department. I think that's got to be up to them. They know a whole lot more about that issue than I think anyone, you know, that's not in their shoes would know about. Thank you.
Shared services, I'm going backwards. We have a very clever department head who delighted telling me that he's made another deal, and there are more cities that want to get in on this. And he's kind of like the catalyst that keeps these other people saying, "What can we do about this?" So I think we're doing quite a good job at that. Within the plan commission, Brian and I have faced some very difficult decisions. Almost every meeting, somebody from another town within our extraterritorial three-mile boundaries will come and they will want to put in a couple houses here, a couple houses there. And we will look at our comprehensive plan and our land use plan for the next twenty years and say, "This doesn't fit. This is supposed to remain agricultural." Okay, if this is our next, in your way out here, how are you going to get services from us without costing our taxpayers an arm and a leg? And so that the economic impact of decisions that are made both in the plan commission and the council may have far-reaching effects later on. Urban sprawl, the plan commission, I think, is making sure that's held in check. Thank you.
Our final question tonight is for Meredith Schallerman, and the question is, the city's quality of life, jobs, and economic climate are hot button issues. Should ensuring basic services, neighborhood preservation, and street improvements take precedence over commercial revitalization? And how much more spending on new, new projects can the city afford?
A question that you asked maybe three, four questions ago was top priorities, and protecting core services was one of them. Has been my platform, will continue to be my platform, because we must have safe neighborhoods, we must have, you know, police and fire protection. It's great to have our city roads cloud when the snow comes through, etc. So protecting core service is important. But I've also been equally vocal on having economic development as a piece two to my platform. And as far as city government spending, I ask the question often, if, if we don't invest, why should a developer? So I do think that there has to be some public monies that go into some projects. It's very difficult to put a dollar amount without knowing the specifics of a project, but I do think that the city must play a partnership with private developers.
I, I do think we need to balance those core services with our advancements and our growth here in the community. I would also say that in order to continue to provide quality, appropriate, and responsive core services, we need to make investments in our, in our future. We need to make those smart, responsible investments. How much more money? I don't think any of the six of us are up here qualified to say a specific dollar amount on a project that we may not even know about at this point in time. But what I can say to you as, as a council member, what I will look for is a plan, is it responsible, and if we had an opportunity for public input and activity involved in that. Thank you.
Core services, certainly, they shouldn't necessarily take huge precedence over continued development, but I do think that we have to take a look at it, and we need to make sure that those services stay intact above and beyond everything else. The fire department, for example, of this city, in, in some areas, does not even meet national standards, and I think that that's a shame. And the other thing that we have to keep in mind is the fact that as you have more growth, more economic development, your need for core services is going to increase. And so if you're going to push for more planned growth, and I think we'd all like to see that, you also have to have a plan in place to pay for that growth. So that's, that's a very important thing. As far as a dollar amount that the city should be putting into certain things, I, I think that Brian said that really depends on the project and the viability of the things.
Sure, I'll kind of sob a little my thunder there. Yeah, with, with rapid growth or any growth, your core services are going to go up, and we have to definitely make sure that we take care of that. Quality of life, I mean, the quality of life is, is for the people here that, that live here now. We've got to take care of what we have now. That doesn't mean let's get away from redevelopment. We take care of what we have right now in this city. Developers, entrepreneurs, builders, they're all going to come, they'll take a look at that. They'll be able to feed off it through the citizens and through our government. We've got to make sure we take care of what we have. I mean, it, it's important for redevelopment because that does raise our tax base up. But if we take care of what we have, and then we can go from there, and other people are going to want to be a part of Oshkosh. Thank you.
Core services have been offered in